The call to order, the Buckswood Town Council meeting for Thursday, March 27th, 2014. Road call, please, Kathy.
Mike Ormsby.
Here.
Glenn Finley absent, Dave Keen absent, Dave Keane.
Here.
Frank Dunbar.
Here.
Peter Stewart absent, Byron Bitten.
Here.
Okay, we do have enough people here on the council for a quorum, but any action would have to be a unanimous vote, for the people out there wondering how we'd get anything passed tonight. Okay, item three is consider minutes of previous meetings. Do we have any?
Yes.
Yep.
I move we accept the minutes from January 30th as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes from January 30th. Any more from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Is that it? Okay. Okay, item four, receive and review correspondence and documents. We do have a letter or document from Mr. Hendrick Gidson?
Gideon.
Gideon. This is in reference to the Chatta Commission proposal for Hancock County. We basically are just handing this out tonight for review of the council to see if they have any comments on a, at another meeting, but I believe Mr. Gideon has something to say.
Thank you very much, Mayor Keane. As you, well, if any of you who have read the first paragraph of that document, you'll know that I pride myself on my work, and when I discover an error in something I've done, I need to correct it and apologize for its occurrence. In the second page of the document which you have in front of you, in the first full paragraph, the last two and a half lines should be struck after the chief financial officer, comma, strike those two and a half lines. That was inaccuracy. I accepted it on its face value. I was embarrassed to find out that it was false, apologized to the individual, and promised I would make corrections when I appeared.
Okay.
And I've done that. I would be pleased to be, if you choose to discuss this, if you alert me to it, I will come.
Okay.
Not to pitch for it, but simply to...
Answer any questions.
Ask or answer any questions.
Okay, well, what we're going to do is, this has been presented to the council. We'll give the council an opportunity to read it over, and if there's any more information we want, we'll definitely get a hold of you, or if there's any action that is going to be taken on it, we'll get a hold of you.
Great. Good. Two last comments. This is the prettiest room of any room in the county for this purpose, and the fastest growing city maybe up in the northeast, but the largest attendance is here. So, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item five, budget workshop, and we're discussing education. Mr. Boothby.
Good evening, gentlemen. Sorry I scared everybody else away, but I know it always has to do with money, and it's not the easiest decision.
Thank you, sir.
What I presented to you, and I'll leave enough with Kathy for the other council members, is an overview of where we are. As you know, our budget process starts back as early as November and takes us right through into May. We are at a point now, we've done our expense side of the budget, and we're just now getting information and data from the state in terms of our general purpose aid, and we'll be going back to the school board to have our conversations relative to expenses now with revenues. What you see, and I presented to you on the front, is just a number of pieces of information for you. The, I've broken this down into the cost centers, which is the requirement of our budget development, and I want to point out that the first FY15, there's good news, bad news. The bad news is the rough first blush budget is up 4.89 percent. This is not unusual, because this is, we ask people to put in what they would like to see. Then we take that back and have conversations with the school board relative to revenues and impacts on our communities. But what I want to point out, I gave you a perspective, since the district became consolidated, if you take a look at FY10, and I use that for the basis for the last two columns, our budget, even presented with the, as the first draft, is still below where it was in FY10 as approved. So, I'm pleased to say that consolidation is proving itself in terms of efficiencies very nicely, and I'm also very pleased to share with you that we're making gains academically as well, and we're moving in the right direction. Still a lot of work left to do, but we're very pleased with it. The general purpose aid 279 came out. It shows that RSU 25 will receive $3.6 million as a preliminary. Expectation for mills would be at 8.07. Relative to last year, the general purpose aid that we received after the legislature took action at the last minute was $3.8 million. I do want to point out that we only used $3.6 million of that, and we offset the assessments of the communities with an additional $225,000. You know, with the board, the board really felt strongly that we built our budget, approved our budget with $3.6 million. Any money that came in after that needed to be recognized by the towns, not by the school district. Very pleased with their action. So, relative to FY14, we're about even to what we built our budget on last year, 3.6. There's only $1,000 off. Okay? That is not a solid number. Legislative action has not been taken. There's going to be a lot of discussion, I'm sure, in Augusta about what's going to happen there. There's been discussion about impacting a $9.5 million reduction. How that will affect us will depend on how they roll out that reduction, but we'll stay on top of that. Give you a taste of our enrollment, we're projecting enrollment next year to be just about 1,100 students. We've hit a trough where I think we've bottomed out, and so, give or take 1,100 this year, right now, we're at 11, 1082. That changes day by day, but, so we've hit a nice spot there. I do want to point out that special education has been a conversation point when I've been before the council before. We're showing a decrease in our percentage of special education, which is a positive trend. It's a good thing, but I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. Cost sharing this year, and I know I'm going fast, but I want you to be aware of this. They changed the EPS formula. There used to be the valuations for the communities was established from two years previous valuations. They're now averaging two years, so it's going to flatten out the profile for the communities. You won't see as quick of an up or as quick of a down, and so, that's a little different shift. When you look at, as we're going into FY15, I broke down the district and the cost sharing. As far as the pupils go, Bucksport would maintain 62.8 percent of the pupils, and evaluation 67.27 percent. Those are all key factors as we move forward.
Excuse me, Jim.
Yes.
That would be our percentage that we pay of whatever the school budget is?
Of whatever's above the EPS formula, yes.
EPS, right.
Yep. That's our cost sharing, and every year we adjust that depending on what the totals are. Any questions before I go charging forward? Just threw a lot at you very quickly, I apologize.
I think we should, this one, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dave.
One of the big jumps seems to be in debt service.
Yep. I was going to point that out next. The debt service is that, that ties to the bond that we just approved last year for the high school facade. That ties in $215,000 of additional debt service. Now, next year, when we knew this was going to be a one-year jump, next year, we're going to be retiring a debt, so we'll reduce that by $100,000. Our debt service will go down by $100,000 next year. Okay? And actually, Mayor, that $215,000 of debt service represents about 1.56 percent of that 4.89 percent, so.
Yep.
So, that's one of the keys that, you know, we saw that as a fix. Now, we're being, the other challenging, and this is a good time to talk about the drivers of that increase, obviously debt service was a big driver in that. Also, health insurance, we're anticipating a 9.5 percent increase in health insurance. Last year, we absorbed a 13 percent increase in health insurance. We have been working through collective bargaining to contain those costs as best we can while still maintaining coverage for our employees, but I appreciate the efforts of the board and the unions for working together for that. But still, those are large increases. On top of that, you have your, the collective bargaining agreements will determine the cost for your salaries and such, and that'll be a driver. There's obviously other things in this proposed budget which would be items that we've identified as this is, would be an enhancement to the program, or this is what we'd like to do. Those will all come under scrutiny the next time we go around through this, and I'm sure the board will direct me to, you know, identify areas where savings could be captured.
Do you have a, and I know there's not a definitive answer to this.
Okay.
Do you have a guess at when you anticipate you'll have a fairly firm number?
Yes, I do. It's a great question. Thank you very much for asking. This is under your schedule.
Thank you, Dave.
With our timeline, we need to have a date, May 13th is our drop dead date that we, the board will have to make a decision when they'll be. I anticipate we can get our work done prior to that, by the end of April, but that should help you with your question.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. But that'll give you the timeline. Next week, we're looking at having our next, if it doesn't snow next Wednesday, have another budget workshop, and that's where we start working on the revenue side and start having these conversations, so if you folks like to come and be a spectator, it's an exciting evening.
Now, your debt service is increasing for part of this bond for the facade improvements and other improvements at the high school, right?
Correct.
What is the, there's also some monies in there that is like a grant for that, right? That isn't necessarily reflected in this debt service?
All the money that we're going to owe for that debt service has been tied into this number. There's not going to be any other additional numbers. That's what we're going to have to pay back. Okay?
But can you tell me what the total amount of money that is...
Total package?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's $2.5 million, and where we got the money from was, we've got approximately a million dollars from the revolving renovation fund, which is a program the state has to maintain buildings, and we were approved, actually, we were number two on the project list, which was kind of exciting. So, of that, $997,000 that we received, they've forgiven 32 percent of that, so we only have to pay back $660,000 to that, so that's, that's helped us out. Another portion of that would be the QSCB, Qualified School Construction Bond, which was for $667,000. That is a program where the bond is purchased by a bank, and in this case, our bond was purchased by Camden National, a local bank. The interest that they charge us on that, we will get reimbursed by the IRS, and so, our first interest payment is due next, in May, and we've already filed paperwork with the IRS to get our refund. So, what it is, is we'll kind of, we'll pay it out, we'll get it back in. So, it actually turns into a zero interest loan for $667,000. And then, the remaining balance of that will be a general, general bond, general obligation bond, and we'll be actually taking action at our next board meeting on that, so go from there.
And the anticipation with these improvements to the high school, that that school will be around for another 25, 30 years, maybe?
I would say 30 to 40 more years. That's what we're looking at. You're going to see an entire, all your glass is going to turn into, if it's not a window, it's going to turn into masonry, and that's going to be a covering over the top of a framed wall, insulated framed wall, which would be filling in the void, and they're actually going to start work, April vacation. They're going to do a practice round, taking down some of the windows on the music wing. Works on the first floor, just to make sure what they're going to do is going to work. So, it's exciting. The company's been on top of their game. They've already started fabricating, and the walls are going to be shipped in on trucks delivered to the school and stood up, and then, once they get fastened, then the masons will come in behind and put the finishing exterior on. So, it's an exciting project. If you will, on the second page, if you roll it over, just some things to share, and I'm very pleased to say there's a lot of great things happening at our schools. Our test scores are showing that we're continuing to improve. Our elementary, Miles Lane School and our middle school, were identified as one of 19 schools in the state of Maine as high improving schools, so I'm very proud of that. We're not, even though I say we're very happy with that, I also say we have a lot of work left, and that's fine. We'll recognize that. What I presented to you is a profile of graduation rate and dropout rates since 2006. You can see in 2006, our graduation rate was at 74 percent. This past year, we were at 91 percent.
Wow.
So, we have a positive profile there. Our dropout rate in 2006 was 7.69 percent based on the cohort. This year, our dropout rate was so low, it fell below 10 individuals, so it's, the state can't report on that because you can identify the individuals once it gets below a certain number, but it's, it's well below 3 percent, which is good news. Post-graduation activity for the high school for the last two years, you can see, in 2012, 69 percent of our students moved on to post-secondary two or four-year schools, 15 percent went in the military, 9 percent in the workforce, and 7 percent returned for a fifth year. And this is interesting, because students with special needs are entitled to stay in school until they're 20, so it's not a matter of four years, and thank you very much, you may go now. If they choose to stay, they can stay there, but they actually count as a dropout.
Hmm.
Okay? And we have students who will say, and I need an extra year, I didn't finish, and they can graduate in five years, but they still count as a dropout. So, some of our dropouts are included in those numbers, too, so it's not all bad. And then, 13, our numbers, 72 percent went on to college, 15 percent into the military, 10 percent in the workforce, and 3 percent returned to VHS for a fifth year. So, exciting things are happening. We've entered a program. We actually are offering now at the high school, we have over 30 college credits that students can acquire through articulation agreements with University of Maine Fort Kent, Eastern Maine Community College, and the University of Southern Maine. We're part of the bridge year program in Hancock County. The bridge year program has been where students from high schools would go to their career and technical centers, and in association with the University of Maine, be able to take college courses for the two years of their technical program. The folks, for the bridge year folks, were willing to do something different with Hancock County, so we're running it like a Hancock County technical program, and so, each of the schools in Hancock County have an allocation of students who, for the program, and we're going to be allocated up to four slots that we know are guaranteed of kiddos that can take the bridge year program, which means they'll do their vocational programming at HCTC or with us if they're doing welding, and then, they'll take the courses from the university at Ellsworth High School and still be considered Bucksport High School students, but they'll be able to get at least one year of college completed while they're in high school.
Wow.
We also have an articulation agreement with Maine Maritime Academy where we're doing pre-engineering courses with them, and so, some exciting things are happening at the school. Very proud to report that.
That's what we were looking for.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. Yes, sir.
A question. First off, the, on the graduation rate, I think that's fantastic. You people definitely need to be commended for the 17 percent increase. That's fantastic. The only question I would have is, how does that compare statewide? What, I mean...
We're above the state average.
We're above the state average.
We're above the state goal.
Great.
When it comes to graduation.
Fantastic.
And a lot of that has to do with, we're really being purposeful about dealing with the individual needs of all students, and the BAR program, which we just finished up, that grant, this is our last year of that, has been wonderful, helping us really target to learn the needs of every child, and we've expanded that now into the sophomore year, and so, the teachers are talking about the kids on a regular basis, and they know the ones that are doing well, okay, we can still support them. Who needs a little extra help, or who needs a lot of help? And we're not letting kids slip through the cracks. You know, again, it's not perfect, but it's far improved, and we're using data to really track these kids and to find out, you know, how they're doing and staying on top of them. That, along with our curriculum changes and moving towards proficiencies, the kids really know, they understand what the learning targets and the goals for each class are, and they know that they have to do well on those, or they don't move forward, and it's paying dividends.
I understand you're right when you said next year, the debt service should go down about $100,000.
About $100,000 we're retiring a debt.
That's one of the areas that increased quite a bit this year.
Yes.
The other area that looks like it increased quite a bit was regular education. Is that basically due to contractual obligations?
It's tied right to it, yes.
What does it look like if you get, like, another community, like you've been checking out to sign on, how does that help you, your numbers?
What that'll do is, that would add approximately 150 students, so it would take us up over the 1,200 student mark. If you look at the high school, we can absorb 50 or 60 students, and we wouldn't have to add faculty, so that's a positive impact. You'd up your EPS. So that's a positive impact. You'd up your EPS numbers in terms of the K through, pre-K through 8 programming. Depending on where those numbers are, and they never turn out to be 10 kids at a level. It's always, you know, 15 here, 5 there.
Good use and bad use.
Exactly, exactly. We'd have to make some adjustments in terms of that, but all in all, it'll be very positive. The impact, just in rough calculations, for Bucksport would take your share down from that 67% down to about 59%. So it would lessen the burden on each of the towns.
So when does it happen?
That's up to them. That community did vote, and they voted overwhelmingly to move forward with the withdrawal process. At this point in time, they know we're a suitor, and we're standing by, ready to respond, but the ball is in their court.
Right.
But I think it would be, at first blush, I'd say it would be a very healthy fit for both, both sides of the conversation. And like I spoke to them, it's gonna boil down to a business decision, and will this be a good fit? And then we run the numbers on either side, and if they're positive, then that's something we should move forward with. And if they're not, then we should recognize that and never make a force fit. And I think that's been one of the secrets to this RSU. It really wasn't as much of a force fit as others were.
Yep.
I wonder something, assuming it goes to the point that it's gonna work out and you wanna go forward. Who makes, who makes the official decision to move forward?
The voters.
You have to bring it out to a vote?
Everything goes to a vote.
They do. Do we also?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
So the three, the existing members would all have to vote in favor of?
In favor, yeah. Yeah. And so, you know, basically, all my job is going to be is to work with them, along with the school boards, to create a possible plan. Same thing we did with the transition to an RSU. It's coming together with a transition plan. And then present that to the voters to get their information. As we go, we'll do informational meetings.
Do you have a cost per pupil, and how does that compare to the rest of the state?
Right off the top of my head, I can't quote it for you, but I can tell you.
Roughly ballpark?
Ballpark, we're average or below. We're the lowest in Hancock County still. As far as our high school tuition rate, we are at state average there. And as far as our elementary tuition rate, we're below state average. My goal has been to try to stay right around that state average as best we can, so we don't shortchange our programming. But we don't go beyond our capacity to be able to afford the programming. That's been the strategy.
The directive we gave all of our department heads was basically to flatline their budgets, except for contractual obligation. I hope that, you know, 4.89% seems a little steep, considering we're trying to flatline. And it sounds like this is just a wish list right now, that you will still tweak it. And, you know, we're all in tight budget times. But I think what you're reporting tonight, we're seeing some great, great things out of our school system. And we wanna support education, but we don't wanna break the bank either.
I think a message is heard and received, and there's some board members behind me, and I think they've had similar conversations with me as well, so.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, I think you've done a great job at the school.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's not me, it's everybody.
I know it's everybody, but.
Yes, sir.
He's a leader, too.
Yeah, why not? Tell him.
Thank you, sir.
I have, actually, just got two questions. One is, when, if you look at another community coming into the RSU, how does that, how does that impact the state funding formula? And is it, is it based on, on community valuation? And have you looked at that to see how, how that would affect a community coming in?
Without being too presumptive, I did take some preliminary looks at it. And how it affects us, it affects us on two levels: student numbers and valuation. The community that's expressed interest in conversations with us, their valuation would be very similar to what Orleans' valuation is. And their student numbers would be about 10% fewer than Orleans', maybe 15% fewer. So it's a fit. So it's not gonna put us in a skew. It's not gonna be a community that's gonna have extremely high valuation, which is gonna drop us. We're right now about a 30% receiver. And when I first got here, we were actually at 42 or 43%, so we've been going down, but.
Because the economic development directors were bringing in value.
Obviously, that's. This came off smooth, even though we rehearsed it, it came off great, so.
My second question is that, I serve on the board for the community college, and I know we're working really hard at retention. When you're looking at the percentage of students that go on to higher education, do you have any way to be able to track what they do beyond the first semester?
We do through the Mitchell Institute. I don't have those numbers with me tonight, but we do have some numbers to that, yes.
I'd be interested to see how, how we're doing as a, as a school, as far as. The question is that, if you've got 74% going on to college, how many of them actually graduate? Versus how many just go the first year and say, "College isn't for me."
And we do have data for that, too.
Certainly be interested in seeing that.
I can make that available.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else have any questions for?
I'd like to know what the heating costs look like now that you're connected to natural gas.
Cheaper than oil. More expensive than projected.
And compared to your current year budget and the year before that, please?
We are down about 30%, which is very nice.
Any problems, or is it going smooth?
Extremely smooth.
Good.
The only issue that we had at all was with one of our burners kept cutting off when it went to high fire. And they tried for multiple attempts to fix it, and it turned out to be on the sealed side of the burner, which was the factory side. And there was a wire that was broken off.
Oh, no kidding.
And that was it. Since they fixed that, it's been very, very smooth.
Good.
Very, very good. And what's nice about it is, with just the toggle switch flip, we can go from natural gas to oil.
Yep.
And we've retained our tanks. And according to the EPA, we have to, we have to take a shipment every year to keep the tanks active. We'll obviously inspect them and license them the way we're supposed to, so we'll do that. And we'll, our plan is to play the highs and the lows.
Right.
Go back and forth.
Yeah. I don't think you'd be buying a lot of oil.
I don't think so.
I really think the propane's, I mean, the natural gas is gonna go back down, you know, next.
I think you're right.
Yep. But that's good. I'm glad that happened.
Yeah, and it's in every one of the buildings.
Now, if I get them to come down my street, I'd be all.
There you go.
In the summer.
Yeah, I know.
Any other questions out there? I have one more. You know, for years, Bucksport's school system has had a black eye, so to speak, as being poor performers, a rough place to educate. You know, looking what has happened over the last five or six years, it's a really good story. Do you have any plans on how to get that story out there to the other communities and to generally the people around this area? Hancock County, Penobscot County, saying, "Hey, Bucksport's a great place to come live and raise your kids because we have an excellent school system."
Well, part of that is, and I'm gonna extend the offer right now, I did with the Chamber of Commerce and invited the Chamber of Commerce to go on a tour with kids in the building. I think it's important. So the plans are yes, starting with grassroots first, because I find grassroots probably the most important place to start. I can do whatever writing I wanna do, but until I can get you in and actually see the buildings. When you come into the hallway and you walk into the hallway and you go, "Where are the kids?" Well, they're in the classes. And you say, "Wait, is over 300 kids in this building?" Yes, there are. And they're actively engaged. It's a positive story to tell. And then have people talk to the kids about what's happening, you know, walk into the different classes. So I extend that invitation to the council. Love to do it. And I can get together with you and throw out a date, and folks can meet. That'd be wonderful. I'd love to do that. So that's probably first and foremost. Another thing I'd like to do is, with your indulgence, if we can talk, can talk to our board chair about maybe putting together a joint workshop between the town council, the school board, and invite the selectmen from our other member towns, and just start to talk about economic development, the role of education, and go from there. We do have a good story to tell. We have challenges. I am not denying that. But we're gaining. I'm very pleased to see the efforts we're moving forward, and we'll continue to work, work at it. And we're gonna take our bumps. There's gonna be some things that aren't gonna be good, other things are gonna be better, and we'll move forward.
Who contacted who about this other possibility of the other community?
They reached out to us.
That's a good sign.
I thought it was a very good sign. And they came over, and I did a visit with their select board and their town manager. And we spent four and a half hours, and they were very impressed. And we went over there and did a presentation, and that went over favorably, I believe. So we put our best foot forward and go from there. We have some plans to do more things as we generate and start to move on. We've had a number of schools visiting our schools to see how we're transitioning to proficiency-based education. That's very nice. That's getting us out there and putting us on the map, so. You know, I don't mind telling our story, but I don't wanna be bragful and boastful. But I will tell you, as a, as a consumer, and I'm very, very pleased, I'm gonna take my hat off as superintendent, I'm gonna be a dad now. The board was very kind to allow me to bring my daughter to school here. She's graduating this year. I pray to God she does. It's time for her to graduate. She was accepted at five colleges. She chose to go to Maine, and she was accepted into the honors program, which is exciting for her. But she received academic scholarships at all five of the schools. Three of the schools were out-of-state schools, and there were significant awards, $60,000 a year. Not 60, over four years, $60,000 over four years at one of the schools. You know, I'm very pleased with the education, the opportunity she received here, so.
You and I had had a conversation maybe a month or so ago about doing some collaboration between the town and the school system on putting a video together.
Yep.
About what Bucksport has to offer. Mr. Marlin, I believe, was involved with, back, the junior high did that, well, back when it was the big.
VHS.
VHS. So that was a while back.
We're coming ways.
There's a bunch of copies of that around, but I think that's something we really ought to do. And I think it'd be a heck of an exercise for the students and also get some townspeople involved with it, too. And put the message out there that, hey, Bucksport's a nice place to live and raise your family and.
They're good opportunities.
I know where you could premiere it.
You could direct it.
Hopefully, it'll be in digital form.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I had a chance to go on that tour with the Chamber of Commerce. I did not grow up here in Bucksport, but I can tell you, I was thoroughly impressed with the students at every school that we visited. I remember when I went to high school, sir, we'd get up five minutes to 10 minutes before the bell rang and waited in line, because we had nothing better to do. Our students aren't doing that in any of these schools. They are there until the bell rings in the seats. And it was wonderful. It's a great story. The school board and the superintendent are doing a fantastic job.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Boothby.
Entirely welcome, and if anybody has any questions, feel free to give me a call. I'll be happy to chat with you. We appreciate your support.
Thank you.
And thanks for the push. I know it's still there. I hope you don't think I'm rude, but run home.
No, no, no problem.
Drive safely.
I will. Thank you.
That was how to clear a room, doesn't it? All right, item six, Consider Resolve R 2014-172, authorizing a payment of $40,550.50 to all of our associates for design engineering services regarding to the secondary treatment plant upgrade. This is basically just the regular engineering services getting ready to start building our secondary treatment plant. And it's basically all budgeted. It's coming out of an account for that purpose. So how would the council like to proceed?
I move to approve Resolve 2014-172 as presented.
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Pose, motion passes. Item seven, Consider Resolve R 2014-173, authorizing the purchase of a Marshall-Swift appraisal guide for the assessors' office.
Yeah, I'm missing the amount here, and did he have a figure on amount?
Yeah, it should be on the resolve.
Okay.
In the resolve, it's, the Finance Committee.
I'm sorry, I missed it. Okay.
Reviewed it and recommended that these funds be used. Jeff presented to the Finance Committee the, his need to update his Marshall and Swift Guide, the one that he's using now, that, as you can see in the resolve, that he uses to determine values on buildings. The one he's using now is 2004.
10 years old.
And so he's asked to be able to use the, use these funds to be able to update a new one. And he said that, he thought that, traditionally, they can get about four or five years out of them before they'd need to replace them again. So it's a one-time cost that shouldn't see it again for another four to five years. And it would, the, there's sufficient funds in the, in this year's account to cover that cost.
It's coming out of the town office equipment reserve account.
Correct.
Which is.
And it's 614, so.
Correct. The cost of it was 599 plus shipping, so the total is 6.
14, correct.
Yeah, how would the council like to proceed? So move.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? Further from the council? All those in favor? Pose, motion passes. Item eight, Consider Resolve R 2014-174, to accept the recommendations of the Finance Committee to renew the existing certificate of deposit with Camden National Bank for a period of two years. Michael?
Yep, this is a CD that's come due at the end of this month. And we opted at this time to go with Camden, which is, I think, the one, it's the same, it came from their bank, this one that's due, right? With the best, they had the best rate of, unfortunately, it's not very high, but it's 1.15% over a 24-month period. We also set up some dates to look at this in the future on how we invest and maybe to give us a few more options. Did I miss anything, Catherine?
The two financial institutions that you selected to present.
Yep, that's, is that? Oh, it's in the resolve, okay.
And this is all part of our undesignated fund balance, this money?
Yeah, this is the, what we had invested.
There are two CDs. There's 1.6 million in undesignated funds, which is 1/4 of the total, and also 600 some odd thousand of capital reserves, totaling the 2.3 million.
The two banks that we'd like to keep talking to about future investments, which the next CD due will be in September of this year, will be Acadia Trust and First Advisors. And we've set up some dates that we can, you know, we're gonna talk about down the road to, they can help us go over this type of investing that we can possibly do. Right now, we're actually, when you look at it, we're actually losing money by only getting 1% back on your money. Because over two-year period, you have more than 1% cost of living increase.
Okay, thank you. How would the council like to proceed?
I move for approval of the Resolve 2014-174 as presented.
Second. We have motion and second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Pose, motion passes. Okay, item nine, Consider Resolve R 2014-175, to accept the recommendations of the Finance Committee for the funding to the Alamo Theater. Mike?
Gee, I love that Finance Committee. The Alamo Theater came to us. They've been on a fundraising drive. They started a, like Friends of Fort Knox, they started a Friends of Alamo to work on raising funds for a couple purposes now it turned into. One was to get a digital projector, and due to the fact that they almost can no longer get any new films that aren't just solely in digital, so they only.
get any new films that aren't just solely in digital, so they only have 35 millimeter and they, they need to, if they want to keep up with being able to show recent released films, they have to have a digital, which was going to cost them $50,000 approximately. So, they came to us to ask us if we could help them also, and, and due to the fact that they have been raising money really well so far, they needed a little assistance to get to some goals. I guess the, there is a, they were going to be given two $25,000 grants if they could match those grants, and one of them was the $25,000 for the digital projector, and the other one was 25,000 for the logistics of the theater itself, to kind of upgrade it and keep it going. And we all talked it over, and there's been a lot of support in town around it, so we decided, at the time, they needed $7,500 to make their first goal of 25,000 so they could actually purchase the, and get the other 25 so they could actually purchase the digital projector. So, we were making recommendation to the council that we give them that money, $7,500, so that they will actually have the money to buy the projector. And we also, in order to help them make their goal of another 25,000, we, we off, we're suggesting to the council to offer 12,500, half of the 25, if they raise the other 12,500 themselves, and they wouldn't receive ours until they raised theirs. Once they get that, they'll get another 25,000 from this other grant, which would give them a total of $100,000 to buy the projector and to upgrade the theater. So, it's a total of 20,000, and we're asking that it come out of TIF funds.
How would the council like to proceed?
I move for approval of the 2014-175 reference to funding for the Alamo Theater.
Yes, second that. We have a motion and second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? Feel free to speak.
I'm holding my breath.
It's a good idea.
There's four of us up here, all, just one has to say nothing. Are you disappointed out there, or you?
Not yet.
Not yet? Anything further from the council?
Yes. Okay, go ahead, you first.
One of the, one of the important things we discussed during the meeting with the representative from the Alamo is concerning the second matching grant, the second $50,000, one of the things that they're going to look at trying to do, there's no commitment because it isn't at that point yet, is the possibility of having a person that would help draw in artists of various sorts to the Alamo for the 200-odd nights a year that they don't have movies for, which is a, will be a big benefit to the Alamo, obviously, but also to all the rest of Bucksport, because if they bring in entertainers of, that will bring people into downtown, that generates funds when the other people are downtown, and it spreads out, it's a, it's a very good thing to have happen. And they, I know Mr. White thought that was, you know, something they could look at and work towards. Being the, in this particular case, a person that's saying the glass is completely full and sort of my normal position, in this position, that could potentially grow to something that would involve Bacchus, the auditorium, and everything, I mean, but that's down the road a ways, but it's the first step towards that kind of a draw into town. And again, we need to do everything we possibly can to get peoples, people into downtown. We can't make them spend money, but we can get them down there by golly, we can, we can urge them the right way. So, I just, I think that's an important part of that second grant.
I just think that the theater is an important landmark downtown, and it also does something that I didn't realize that no other private concern does in New England, and that's to save films. And it's quite an operation there, and it's, it's something that I know, you know, is needed, and when people find out about it from other states, they're starting to use it, but what it's important for us is the theater, and it, right now, it is the most visible downtown building. When you come in, everybody recognizes a theater because of the marquee front and everything else, and, and the reason we didn't give them, somebody had, had asked that we just give them a lump sum, and we, we didn't want to do that. We'd like to keep them raising money. And so, that's why we made it a contingency-type thing, because we, we want people to continue to give to the theater and help them make their goal, and so we're just, we're just assisting them, so. And we did before in the past, and maybe down the road, we'll do it again. But that's why we did what we did.
We appreciated the time you took, really. The questions were amazing, and it was, it was great, the time you took with us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I can remember the black and white films we were showing. Back when I was talking to Mr. White there one day, and I said, I remember the last movie played, was a movie Godzilla in black and white, and he turned around and pointed to a poster that was actually that movie. You know, scared the heck out of me. I was only six.
You were looking in your closet every night, right?
Yeah, traumatized ever since. Okay, we have a motion and seconded on the floor. Anything further from the council? I think it's just a super, super idea. It's great what you people are doing, and I think it's fantastic the support you're getting from all over the world, basically, to save, save the Alamo, which is a vital part of our downtown. And so, okay, all those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, item 10, consider resolve R. 2014-176 to refer request from Main Water to Finance Committee for a recommendation. This is basically something we do on a routine basis, I believe. It's actually a tax abatement for some of the infrastructure that they have, which helps keep our overall users' rates down. How would the council like to proceed? Again, this is just to refer to the Finance Committee. Okay. Make a motion, we refer this to Finance Committee. Second. Okay, we have a motion and second to move this on to the Finance Committee. Anything from the public? From the council?
One thing. The, I believe there's a typo, and so we don't get to the point of passing it at some future time with a typo in it. If you go down to the one, fifth paragraph up from the bottom, it says that Main Water currently pays taxes on 1,256,518.
Yeah.
And then if you go two paragraphs below that, it says a request would exempt 2/6 in value, leaving a net taxable value of, would that not also be the 1,256, not the 3,896?
I simply cut the numbers from the assessor.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just thinking that-
I wasn't paying attention to the numbers.
Their total valuation is 3,896. You're exempting, potentially going to exempt, 2,621, which would leave a taxable amount of 1,200,000. It's just the wrong number's in the wrong place, and it's just, don't want to get it messed up. Dave, you can see what I circled there.
Yeah, it's, it would be beneficial if you, if you amend it and just, and adopt it as amended.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm suggesting, we could amend that to that number. So, that million, that third paragraph up in the bottom that says net taxable value of 3,896 would actually be 1,256,518.
I just don't want to have it go through and come out of the Finance Committee and-
Yep. That would really mess things up.
Okay, we got to act on this again? Frank, would you amend your motion?
Going to the committee, though.
It's only going to the committee anyway, so we can still send it to the committee. Recommend this to men by the Finance Committee?
Yeah. If you would, if you could just amend, you know, amend the, the resolve so that, again, to make it clean, when it goes to the committee, it would be in the best interest.
Make a recommendation to send to the Finance Committee a request for tax exemption values for Main Water to exempt 1,256,18.
Just say as amended.
As amended, okay.
Yeah, I'll second that one.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Any further from the public? Anything further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, item 11, consider resolve R. 2014-177 to refer a request for a tax collector, from the tax collector, to meet with the Finance Committee in executive session to discuss property tax abatement. And is this an executive session just with the Finance Committee?
Yes. I, after I wrote the agenda, I realized that that could be misinterpreted as to what I was asking for, is that as the state statute says, any time that you meet to deal with abatement issues or the property taxes, the statute says it has to be done in the executive session. So, I just wanted to clarify that so that when you were, were scheduling a Finance Committee meeting, one of the things I had to ask the Chair of the Committee is if we could set it, I know it's a lot to ask for the Committee, but maybe do it on a separate night, that they're doing other things with the Finance Committee, simply because I would prefer to, you know, have the folks who come in to talk with the Committee not be, you know, part of a regular meeting. So, the, when someone applies, submits an application for an abatement, there's a process that has to, how you review that. My position on it is that, that I'm really serving as the tax collector because you needed a body, but I felt that the, the decision-making really of this ultimately would be the council, so I really wanted to get the council's input before I made any decisions as the tax collector.
Sounds reasonable. How would the council like to proceed?
I move, we move resolve 2014-177 to the Finance Committee.
Second. Anything further from the public? From the council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Okay, item 12, vote to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing matters related to two separate local business interests pursuant to Article 1 MRSA Section 405, subsection 6, subsection C. So, we're going to go into executive session or vote to go into executive session to discuss these two items. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to give you a little update on Augusta before you leave, maybe?
Okay.
Would that, would that be okay?
Yeah, just let me finish up by saying that when we come out of executive session, there'll be two votes on these issues that were discussed in executive session. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Sorry, didn't know where to insert myself on your agenda. Just a little update from Augusta. Last week was a pretty successful week. Some of us don't gauge success by laws passed and signed into, bills passed and signed into law. A lot of my bills, this, this 126 legislature, are to get people's attention, and one that we, that I put in was to improve the rail line, to actually do a study and identify the cost of the improvement of the rail line from Bucksport to Brewer. We held it over and finally pulled the bill, but in the process, we've had a very recent meeting with Pan Am Railroad. Early on, I'd heard that they were very difficult to work with, but after we put the bill in and they were fairly upset about it, they finally got their attention, and it worked out pretty well. We actually couldn't get this meeting scheduled, I think we tried three times, but finally last week, we did. Unfortunately, Dave and, Dave didn't, didn't make it, but on Bucksport's behalf, we, we talked about the Sprague site, we talked about the Longview site, they're in constant communication with Bursell, but we had representation from PERC, the managing partner, which is USA Energy, just up the road. We had representation from DOT, the commissioner couldn't make it, but sent two representatives, the freight manager and their lobbyist. We also had two people from Pan Am, Cindy Scaroni, who is the area manager, and the freight manager, who was there. We had representation from Mallinckrodt, the, the landfills in Arlington. That land has been divided up now, so they now own the land, the five landfills. We also had representation from MRC, and I believe you're a member of MRC in the PERC partnership. Let's see, who else did we have? We had Representative Archie Verro, who is Brewer, but also on Transportation Committee. We had the House Chair of Transportation, Representative Terrio from Matawaska, and Senator Youngblood was there, myself, Paul White from the town of Arlington. But what we accomplished was much more than I expected. We'd heard that the upgrade of the rail line between here and there would be about a half a million dollars, but basically, they can upgrade them through a maintenance program, so I guess, the rail line as it's graded now can have seven good ties per, as a 31 feet of rail, but as they get more freight, more interest, more activity, they can upgrade those by adding more rails, so it's almost a maintenance program than an upfront. And we also had a bill, I think I reported on last time, that was to shift the ratepayer subsidy for PERC, which is the electric subsidy, onto municipal waste and tipping fees that we basically defeated in the process, but that was also a carryover bill. But in the process, we had a subcommittee on solid waste, for which I, I served, and we're finding, I think I reported this last time, from my opinion, we're either in the first, the end of the first or the second generation of how we're going to handle trash in the future. And so, the bill to subsidize has gone away, and we've now put together a letter from the Committee to DEP and all the other stakeholders to get together and define what trash is going to look like in the future. They'll come back to the next, next legislature. But in the meeting where we had USA Energy and Transportation, and we had Pan Am, it was interesting because they're all interested in how is PERC now that we aren't going to subsidize, how is PERC, USA Energy, MRC, and the other partner going to continue or not? And what the representative from USA Energy mentioned, now that they're back together talking again, the, the solution to trash may be a container-type transfer station. We heard that Rooster County's got some major problems, they're so far removed that a lot of that's going to Canada. Do they do a landfill? Do they do their own waste energy? But in this meeting, it, it almost sounds like the amount of trash that's generated by the state can be transported to Arlington. Big facility, probably bigger than it should have been or is necessary now, may be able to operate profitably by bringing all the trash in from the state, and maybe even make it a really viable business by whatever the solution of solid waste is in the future. So, that was, that was pretty good. That's, that's basically a forklift in Arlington and containers that either go on truck or rail, or they even talked about barge. rail or, or they even talked about barge. And that was fairly expensive for Orrington, but three, two, two and a half miles down the road, you've got Chimbrough that's, that's got a, a facility there that could, could barge in containers if, if necessary. But the good news was everybody was excited as much as possible about getting together to, to come up with a solution for the rail. Had another meeting with somebody who grew up in Orrington, has been in the energy business for some time and has retired at age 38 and come back and wants to put together a, a business to help people save their energy costs. Every meter in the state now is one of the smart meters that with third party can help you manage the cost of your energy either from, it's, it's sort of a, you, you pay and then they help you manage the consumption. So, right now, it's, it's not legal for a third party to come into the meters, but that's, that's working, working towards that for the next session. Also, he's fairly excited about a commercial solar site, maybe in that Orrington, the 200 acres there. Mallinckrodt now has about 60, control about 60 acres and Orrington has 140. So, it could be an interesting complex where everything kind of comes together, where you've got the rail, Verso, your sites, your economic development. And so, you know, it's been interesting down there, had some good ideas and good discussions and we haven't had a lot of bills signed into law, but I think things are starting to move forward. One thing I would like to, to mention, Dave has been to legislature testifying several things from last year to a more recent testimony and has represented Buckport very well in, you know, some very hard situations. So, you know, I was proud to have somebody from Buckport there doing the right thing and was extremely effective. So, that's what I have from Buckport. Any, any other questions or further instructions?
Sounds good.
Can I ask a quick question? Did Pan Am talk at all about the quality of the service or the quantity of the service versus the, the rail itself?
They, they didn't, they didn't. Their representative, their freight representative there was more than happy to, to talk and serve us. I did mention that, that flat steel concern and, and Verso's had the same concern that they talked to them constantly about. I was pretty enthused because they were, they were welcoming and, and ready to talk and everybody had a little piece of how they could increase their business, therefore they could increase the, the value of the rail. And I basically, Bill basically said, call me anytime. So, I'll get you some names and numbers so you can call him directly instead of going through with Cindy.
Lastly, I just would share with the council that is, we had, unfortunately, we, I already had a, a commitment that I had to be at when they set the schedule, same was with the mayor and same with Verso, so that none of us were able to attend the meeting simply because we had conflicting schedules. It certainly had nothing to do with a lack of interest. We really wanted to be there. We could make the first three ones that were scheduled, we couldn't make the fourth one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to...
I move to go into executive session.
Yes, yes. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion pass.